Okay, like calls we need to order. Start with the roll call.
Mrs. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Conquest?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Karchewski?
Here.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Satorius?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Okay, would you join me if I pledged allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. District announcements?
You want to approve the agenda first?
Oh, we get it there first. You need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
I'll second.
All those in paper, aye?
Aye.
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 Bosna, motion carried. All right, now, district announcements.
Well, good evening, everyone, and good evening to those watching at home through our YouTube link. The major announcement that I want to make, that we will discuss further once we get into our update on in-person learning, is that we are back on track to return to five days of in-person learning on March 1st, as we originally intended. We appreciate everyone's patience as we struggled through some of the last obstacles, which included overcoming some staffing hurdles. But we did make good progress over the weekend, and then further along today. I know Ms. Haas and Ms. Brosman are here from Transportation to give us a little update on some of the efforts that they've had to go through over the past bit, but we are proud to say that we are back on track. So next Monday, we are planning to reopen the schools for five days of in-person learning each week. So we thank everyone involved. There was a momentous effort by the Buildings and Grounds Crew. Mr. Searle, all of the equipment that the board authorized at the last board meeting has been delivered and installed, and they are still procuring additional, even added units to increase in our buildings the safety going forward throughout the rest of the year as well. So we will discuss that a lot more in depth once we get to our update, where we'll discuss all the areas. But that's the major one, and I know we were already starting to get some, a few more emails encouraging us to get there. So wanted to get that out into the public right away, so there you are, everyone. Are we ready for Students of the Month?
Yes, Students of the Month.
So, Mrs. Peel, do you want to at least come up and introduce at least the MIS Students of the Month and the presentation that was prepared?
We'd like to congratulate our three Students of the Month from MIS. Abby Gu from the sixth green team, Alexandra Ewing from the sixth red team, and Samuel Thomas from the sixth blue team. Mrs. Petterick, my secretary, put together a wonderful Students of the Month presentation that features the students, as well as our teachers, for your viewing.
It is an absolute pleasure for me to introduce to you the sixth blue Student of the Month, Sam. Sam is one of those students that just brings an amazing energy to our class. He's the first one to log into Zoom meetings, usually around 4:45 in the morning. He loves math that much. He just brings an energy and excitement. He loves to compete against the other students. He is very knowledgeable, smart, fun. He enjoys thinking about things in a different way. He likes to pose philosophical questions to his classmates to make them think. He, all around, is an absolute pleasure to have in class. I enjoy starting my day with him, and his sixth blue teachers enjoy spending their time with him as well. I can't thank enough his parents for raising such a wonderful child. We appreciate him, we love him, and we're glad that he is our sixth blue Student of the Month.
The sixth grade green team is excited to announce Abby as the February Student of the Month. Abby is an enthusiastic learner who puts great effort into her work. She has a natural curiosity about learning new academic content and is a model student. Abby works well with others, consistently completes quality work, and demonstrates the three Rs: respectful, responsible, and ready at all times. For these reasons, Abby has been named the sixth grade green team Student of the Month. Congratulations, Abby.
Hi, good morning. The sixth grade red team would like to congratulate Alexandra E. for being nominated as our February Student of the Month. Alexandra is a fantastic student who puts her best efforts in everything that she does. She takes her learning seriously and is ready to help others whenever opportunity presents itself. The sixth grade red team teachers are thrilled to have such an outstanding student. Alexandra, you make us proud every day. Congratulations.
Yeah, Alexandra, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of those Students of the Month. Next up, we have Mr. Gensler to announce the junior high school Students of the Month.
Good evening. We had a video we sent out to the community this afternoon, and I think I'm going to steal some ideas from Gina and MIS. So thanks for sharing that. Very well done. First person that won for the junior high, we have seventh grader Lydia D. The Fine Arts Team is proud to recognize Lydia D. Lydia puts a great deal of thought, effort, and care into her art. Lydia is a pleasure to have in class, as she always demonstrates a positive attitude and a willingness to challenge herself. Her completed projects clearly represent a strong work ethic created by a self-driven student. We also have seventh grade from Language Arts, Ethan C. The seventh grade Language Arts Department is proud to recognize Ethan C. Ethan is a very self-motivated, hard-working student and an active participant in the learning process. He can always be counted upon to provide thoughtful and contemplative insight during class time. What really stands out about Ethan is his dedication and learning, and his willingness to go above and beyond when presented with a challenge. Keep up the great work, Ethan. For eighth grade, we have Jack C. The eighth grade math teachers are proud to recognize Jack C. Jack is a very hard-working student who displays a positive attitude. He's always the first one to say good morning when he joins the Zoom. I'm not sure if it's at 5:45, but he's always saying good morning, which is always nice. Jack always has his camera on and is engaged in class, and he participates frequently. Jack takes learning seriously, and we are proud to recognize him for these outstanding qualities. Way to go, Jack. And then our fourth winner, also an eighth grader, Lydia P. The eighth grade math teachers are proud to recognize Lydia P. Lydia is an extremely conscientious student who can be counted on to participate during Zoom sessions, as well as when she is in the classroom. She is an extremely hard worker who takes pride in the work she does. Lydia puts exceptional effort into her classwork every single day and comes prepared to learn no matter what. It is very clear that Lydia strives to be the best student she can be, and it is evident that she will continue to be successful in everything she does. Keep up the great work, Lydia. Congratulations, Lydia, and all the Students of the Month from MJHS, and we thank all the teachers for all their hard work nominating the students, because many students are nominated throughout the month. Thank you.
Comment?
There we go, sorry. We did get two comments submitted, both came in today. The first is from Ms. Amy Manning. Dear Dr. Mann and Manuka 201 School Board, thank you so much for your pursuit of in-person learning, five days per week. As a concerned parent of two elementary school kids, I know in-person learning is the best option for my kids. When they go to physical school, they come happier, they come home happier, and both report they learn easier without the distractions of computer glitches and other e-learning-related problems. I just wanted to encourage the process of returning to five days per week of in-person learning with the goal of having a full day of school for our kids. I understand there are many hurdles to overcome with transportation, physical distancing, et cetera, to make this happen. However, I fear that society as a whole has lost sight of the original goal of the COVID mitigations, which was to reduce community transmission so as not to overwhelm our healthcare system for those who are most vulnerable. The process of reopening schools has become captive to strict guidelines without many questioning whether those guidelines are helping reduce transmission. A recent article published in the January 29th edition of Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, a CDC publication, describes the low transmission rates of COVID within Wisconsin schools open for in-person learning, all day, including lunch, even when community positivity rates were as high as 42% and physical distancing of six feet was not maintained. The data from the study go against the very guidelines that the CDC are recommending. Illinois percent positivity of COVID tests was 3.09% as of last week, which is lower than it has been even during the summer of 2020. Given this data, the strict guidelines suggested of schools are causing more harm to kids and families than good. As long as an option for e-learning is provided to families who do not feel comfortable returning to full in-person school, it is a disservice to the remaining families to restrict the opportunity for our kids to learn. Thank you for your hard work and efforts to return our kids to five days a week in-person school. I know of many other parents who share my same sentiment. Please know that the efforts to pursue a full day of school, five days per week, are so appreciated. Respectfully, Amy Manning. And our second comment is from an employee of the school district, Ms. Jennifer Praveen. As returning to in-person instruction, five days a week for the students, what to participate in this instruction is being discussed tonight, it is important to note that staff are starting to struggle and will be negatively impacted by adding the demands for an additional day. We are in our building, in MPC, all day without anywhere safe to eat our lunch, expose ourselves to two different groups of students every day in person, and because of the age of our students, various safety measures are not consistently followed, such as wearing masks and staying physically distanced. Additionally, providing vaccines to staff has not been a smooth process, causing those who have not yet received a first dose additional stress and anxiety. We are struggling currently to provide safe and quality instruction with stresses, the additional day of in-person instruction impacting our well-being negatively. I don't believe we will be able to continue to provide appropriate instruction or valuable educational experiences to our students. Thank you, Ms. Praveen. That's it, that's all.
Okay, moving on to the consent agendas. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Before we approve the consent agenda, Dr. Mann, can you explain number 3.07 to TRS supplemental savings?
I'm actually going to ask Mrs. Robinson to come up and explain the TRS supplemental savings. This is something that was emailed out to all superintendents about three and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago, or something like that. It is required by law, so this is not something that we really have a lot of discretion in doing, but I'll let Mrs. Robinson go into more details.
Sure. Can you hear me? Yeah. So, like Dr. Mann said, this is a program through TRS that offers our teachers that participate in TRS to shelter an additional savings with a 457 plan. TRS will administer the plan, but we are required to participate in it and allow our teachers to participate in it. This was part of the Illinois Pension Code, a law that was amended in 2018, and it's just taken some time to get put into place. So it really does change the whole way we report to TRS. We typically report at the end of the year, so it's been a big process to move towards reporting on a payroll basis. And we are working, myself and our payroll coordinator, is working with our software company and with TRS so that we can get them that data after every payroll. But this is the first step that the board needs to adopt this policy to allow us to participate in the plan. And saying that we have to adopt the plan, but we don't really have an option. We have to participate in it. So TRS has said that they will provide both our employees and ourselves more information as the plan rolls out, but that's all we know as of right now.
I would add that it does not require any of our employees to participate in this plan. TRS is just required by law to create this plan, and therefore, all of the school districts have to adopt it.
And it doesn't change, we currently have a plan that employees can contribute to a 457 or a 403B. It does not change that plan, and we will still continue to offer that through payroll. This is just an additional option for the TRS employees.
At the present time, there's no cost to the school district for this, is there? Except for our man-hours to...
Right, no, there's no cost, and right in the plan document, it says that we will not be contributing. So the employee can choose how much they'd like to contribute, and the plan document says that the school board will not contribute to the plan.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda items on it are the approval of the minutes, approval of the list of bills, approval of the Treasury's report, motion to destroy the closed session recordings a year ago. Year old, right?
Pardon me, six months?
Six months? Okay. And approval of personnel items, notice of any FOIA requests, and TRS supplemental savings plan, and the approval agenda. One other item, I know there were some FOIA requests, right?
Yeah, we put the FOIA requests, the FOIA requests aren't really approved, it's just notifying the board of the ones that were received. And I stated wrong, it's two years of closed session recording, so this is from February 2019.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest? Mr. Karchewski?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Next item is the AT&amp;T internet two-year agreement.
Mr. Susan will come up and explain, and I will say about a week and a half ago, or something like that, we had a rather large internet outage, and our access to the AT&amp;T internet is what allowed us to reroute and get things started a little sooner than Comcast was able to do. So this redundancy that he has set up is quite beneficial to the district.
Okay, Sarah's doing a lot tonight here, all the bells and whistles. So, yes, today's action item, let me bring this down, is continuing what we already have. We are lucky enough to have internet at Manuka Elementary School, which services the K-4 buildings in MPC, and internet at the junior high school, which services the campus. As far as a budgetary hit, we're already paying this, this is a continuation request of two additional years. The cost is eratable, which we have last year received reimbursement, and we plan on receiving additional reimbursement the following years pending your approval. Yeah, so what Dr. Mann alluded to is multiple districts in the surrounding area, such as Manuka High School, Morris High School, us at Manuka Elementary School, there it proved a point of just how critical internet can be, or is, especially right now with remote learning. And through some trickery and some other bells and whistles, we were able to kind of keep remote learning working that day for the first four hours. We still had numerous other problems that we're still, you know, learning from, but in a normal day-to-day service, this services the campus, and the other internet location serves the K-4s. So we hope to continue this, as it has proven just how incredibly nice it is to be able to pivot if something were to happen, such as a power outage or a cable being cut. It doesn't take everyone down where it does in many other districts, or it can't, so. As far as reliability, we haven't had any problems with that line, and they do guarantee like a 99.99, so four nines reliability for an SLA. And I'll take any questions.
Is this part of the funds that we receive for the money that we receive from the government for the COVID relief? I'm sorry, can you hear me now? We received funds for the COVID relief, is this also part of that that we received?
No, this has been, we've already been paying this, and this has been part of this normal operating kind of budget for internet and connectivity bills. Could we use this money for CARES Act money, potentially? If there's still money left in that bucket, you'd have to ask Mrs. Robinson about that. I believe it's held and claimed, but this would, again, just be kind of a continuation of what we're doing for two years.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I need a motion to approve extending the AT&amp;T contract for two more years.
I'll make the motion to approve our AT&amp;T contract for two years.
A second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Mr. Karchewski?
Aye.
Mrs. Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Skorzinski?
Aye.
Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye, motion carried. Next is the biggie. Update and a return to five-day in-person instruction.
You know, hopefully, it's less of a biggie soon, because we keep making steps and getting ourselves closer to returning to full days of school. But as I said in the beginning, we have overcome the obstacles that we had. When we talked about it last month, we said that there were mainly obstacles in preparing our facilities, and then preparing, you know, getting the adequate staffing for transportation, because we had just seen a large flux in loss of drivers in the fall when we returned. So I would ask Mr. Searle if you could pop up, and as I communicated to the board and the community, the facilities side, we achieved probably by the end of last week, but he can give a quick summary of what his team has done since the last meeting.
Good evening. Just try to give you a brief update. Basically, our department is focused on trying to get Phase 1 completed. We worked alongside all of our contractors, so that would be every one of our personnel, as well as a host of outside contractors. And we've managed to complete the initial Phase 1, so we have all 70 of the mobile units installed. We have, I think it's well over 100 of the permanent mount units installed at MIS and Junior High. So we have met that objective, and we've started working on the second phase. We've ordered the material, that material is in process, we do not have it at the time. We're hoping that maybe as quick as this Friday, we could start engaging on that second phase in some portion. And simultaneously, we've been pretty much maintaining the buildings and clearing snow on about an hourly basis, it feels like. So from our perspective, we feel like we're pretty much where we need to be. Anybody have any questions, I can help to answer.
Look at that, Mr. Searle.
Wow, I'm scared here. Have a good night, guys.
Well done, and I can tell you, his team has been working around the clock. So kudos to the entire B&amp;G staff, the custodians, the maintenance crew, the office, everybody. So tremendous effort, well done, and thanks for getting our buildings ready. Of course, the other side was, we had just issues with transportation staffing. So I'd like to welcome Kathy Haas and/or Kathy Brosman. I don't know if it's a one-person show, or if you're going to tag team there. But Kathy Haas is the director of transportation that we shared with Manuka High School, and she has prepared information on the number of routes that we've gone through and the adjustments that's been made. I know Kathy Brosman has rerouted the district many, many times already this year. Six, up to six times, there it is. So today, early this morning, we were finally able to say with confidence that we had secured enough temporary staffing. We're still in the process of hiring our own new drivers. She did have some, well, you can talk about the job fair when you talk, but we did hold an additional job fair, and we created some incentives to try to bring people in the door, and it's slowly having an effect, so.
It is.
Mrs. Oz.
Hi, good evening. This has been a crazy year due to COVID, as you all know. I want to start off by saying that since June, we have lost nine drivers, seven aides. Oh, it's Closer to Home, sorry, okay. My department has gone through so many challenges in the last six months, as I'm sure as other departments. Some of the things that I have done in the last six months, I have actually contacted eight transportation companies, trying to get their contracts for drivers to sub out and actually work for us. I've only had one company from Hopewell, who is actually still to this day trying to get me two, a quote in two to three days. I've also put out direct mail flyers in all homes, in the towns of Shanaha, Manuka, Shorewood, and Juliet. I've only received two calls from those flyers, unfortunately. Last year at this time, I actually received 10 calls from the flyers. I've also advertised on Facebook, both district websites as well. I've sent out a survey about a month ago to all my high school drivers, asking them if they would come work for 201. Due to COVID, they all refused. I actually had one person that responded and wanted to work for 201. I just had an open house this past Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 at my transportation center. I actually had one person who had a Class A CDL, which requires more training to get their Class B, it's a couple tests. I've had two aides and three potential drivers who are now training to become a seat, to become a bus driver. So last night, I'm sitting at home thinking, what else can I do to make this work? I need to make this work. I came up with an idea if we could pay the drivers, if we had some kind of a bonus to give to the drivers, an incentive for them to come work for 201. I immediately put out a text after I talked to Dr. Mann, and unbelievably, I could not believe the responses I've got from my drivers.
If I can clarify real quick, this is, this was an incentive to the high school drivers that previously said that they didn't have an interest in subbing for us.
Correct.
And when she says didn't want to work for 201, it's not that they're stopping their employment at the high school, it's that they would be willing to sub on our routes after they've completed their duties for High School District 111.
Correct, correct. So not including myself, Jay, Kathy Brosman, and other employees also filling in to drive, I believe we can make this work. At this time, I would like to acknowledge two people. I would like to acknowledge Kathy Brosman and Erin Souza. These two have worked hand-in-hand, late hours, weekends, coming up with a solution as well to make all of this work. I just want to say great job to both of you, and thank you for all you have done for us. That's about it, if you guys have any questions. She, I'm going to have her come up here and talk to you about the numbers in a minute, yes?
I would say, why don't we do that now, and then there may be questions that stem from both of that, so.
Okay. I'll just maybe stay up here.
Okay, can everybody hear me? All right. Okay, so how it kind of looks right now, I can give you exact numbers on every school if you want, or just what we cannot permanently cover at each school, and we are going to have to piece together here and there. How do you guys want me to do that?
Why don't you just talk about the number of routes at each school, like the number of students at each school, the number of routes that you've been able to divide them in, and then when there's, when there's something that's not permanent, that does not have a permanent driver assigned to it, point that out.
Okay, so as of right now, Ox Sable and my junior high intermediate is where our major problems are, where I do not technically have enough buses. I need one more for Ox Sable that would be permanent, and I need at least three more would like for. My numbers at my junior high intermediate, I will be honest with you, those buses are packed out as of right now. If there is more kids that their parents decide to bring them back to school, we still may have even more problems at the junior high intermediate. My buses are running at 49, 48 kits. They're at capacity. So that is a problem there. Other than that, Jones looks good, MES looks good. My MPC, I have some tweaking to do, but that, MPC its own little world, it always has tweaking to do. So I don't think we're doing that bad, except for the fact is, here's the thing, our department has a lot of call-offs. When we have call-offs, and we have an excessive amount of call-offs, we are going to have issues because we do only have a minimal amount of drivers. So those kids will be late to school because somebody, I will have to wait for high school, especially at the junior high level in the morning. I will have to wait for high school to get their routes done, to come in and sub and do that junior high in the morning. So there may end up being, have to be some play in that aspect as well. But other than that, like I said, most of the elementaries are doing good, but their buses are running high. I had to pack kids on to get this to work.
What can our parents or our community members do? As I, as I see on social media, I see some parents saying, if you have elected to be a bus rider, and you actually take your child to school, should they be calling in and saying, I don't need to be stating that my child is a bus rider any longer? Will that help improve your numbers? Is that something we can reach out to our community members and ask them to do?
That would be a very good thing. I do go through, and when my bus drivers come in, they all know. After a couple of days, hey, give me a heads up. Which child? Because on the route sheets, it gives them every child's name that gets dropped off at a stop, plus their grade. If this child isn't riding, let me know, I will call the parents and say, are you going to ride? And if not, I could use the space for someone else.
So you feel that maybe those are purged already?
No, not yet, because everything is changing now. You have to realize that when you guys opened this back up to everybody, we have had a huge influx of children that are coming back. So that changes my whole routing system. This is like my COVID scheme and my five-day-a-week scheme don't match. Because now, like maybe this elementary school, more parents have decided to pull their children out. So now I can, I've taken a bus from here and sticking it over here. This was a whole process of pulling all, every single child that rides a bus off of the buses, and having to rework them so that their junior highs match their elementaries. Because if they don't, I can't have a junior high driver going all the way up to Sable Ridge and then doing an Ox Sable route afterwards, because there's a time limit that they have to have, because they won't make it back and forth. So I have to make sure that their junior high route is up there, so that when it ends, they can go right to their Jones school.
Gotcha.
Yes. So I had to reroute everything, pull every route apart and redo it all. So when these kids go back to school on that Monday, they might not have the same bus driver or the same bus as they had during the COVID scheme.
So it's really important for those parents that are listening on the live stream, that if you are taking your children to school, and you were originally elected to be a bus rider, that you do acknowledge to the school that you will be driving your child, so that you can save some other child that bus spot.
Yes.
Thank you.
I had two quick questions for you. I might have missed if you mentioned Walnut, but I think you said all the elementaries are looking okay?
All except for Ox Sable.
Okay.
That's where I seem to have lost most of my drivers, it seems like, with Ox Sable. I was, I think I only have three original drivers that were there the year before that are still at Ox Sable, either they quit, or it had some that had passed away.
Okay, and then what is your kind of long-term plan? Obviously, bus driver shortage is a national issue, you see all over the news, and what is kind of the plan to continue to pull in permanent employees and keep them, so that moving forward, you know, we're more covered in these events that were, you know, coming back in the fall and things like that?
That would be more the directors.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm planning on having another open house, probably in like three to four weeks. We're going to continue to post on both websites. I have banners all around town, there's two banners all around town that I'm also advertising. Hopefully, that will bring between the, on websites and everything else, I'm hoping, you know, and I've had a lot of people actually call about, questions about it, and come in too, and fill in applications in the last couple of days too, as well. So just keep our fingers crossed that we keep getting more potential drivers.
Kathy, I do want to bring one more thing up. As I did make that mention of parents calling in, some parents need to also remember, they may not, they may need that security blanket for their, for their kids too, that they may not be able to bring them to school every day, so keep that in mind. If you do say that you're going to be able to bring your kid to school every day, but then you don't have that availability, keep that in mind, parents, so if you do call in and say, hey, I'm not going to need that bus, but then you are going to need that bus.
Right, right.
Also keep that in mind, just as that security blanket.
And let me jump in and clarify, because our last communication out to parents, we tried to make sure they understood that if you have the ability to bring your child to school right now, please help and do so, but you do not lose your ability to have access to transportation. We're mandated to provide free transportation to anyone that lives outside of a mile and a half, so they don't lose it, even if they can help us in the short term.
I can also see there's going to be a problem when they pick up the kids from school, that they came on a bus, that they may have a different bus when they're going home then?
No.
How are you going to keep track of what bus they got off of, so they can get back on the?
No, that is no longer an issue. We did have that, and I will be honest with you, I can work miracles with VersaTrans. I can put a child on 10 different buses if I absolutely have to. It is not the easiest thing to do, and it is not always the easiest for the school secretaries to look up to see what I have done, because they don't understand why some kids have four or five different buses, because one day, especially like, with one day we go to mom's, you know, then Thursday, Friday, we go to dad's, and I can program all of that into VersaTrans. And just like with COVID, I did have a lot of junior high, especially kids, that had two different buses. And it is all in VersaTrans, I know where each one of my students are at all times.
You're a miracle worker. Thank you.
I just wanted to, oh, sorry, Andy, I'll be really fast. I just wanted to say thank you to our bus drivers that have been running these routes during the pandemic, and coming to work every day, and being very dedicated to our students. We can plan in the buildings all day long, and if we don't have transportation, we, it doesn't matter. So I just wanted to say thank you to the bus drivers that have been working so hard during this.
Thank you, they appreciate that recognition.
I just had a quick question about, how many bus drivers do we have in the pipeline that we hired that are getting their CDLs? Because quarantine happens for some of the drivers, do we have some backups?
That's going to be an issue too, when we do have quarantines.
I have, I have two drivers coming in as of March 9th, as of right now, they just have their CDL training to pass, and then they're in, they can start driving. And then the ones that just came in, I have the three from the open house, so.
But it takes?
It takes time. A CDL, it takes four to six weeks by the time you grab your book, you study your book, you go to the DMV, you take your written test. Sometimes they don't pass, you have a chance to go back. After you take the written test, I send them over to Lori. Lori does the fingerprinting, background check, physical, and paperwork. Once they get that done, they're in a process, they have to do an eight-hour class in the meantime, and then they, my trainer, I have, actually I hired, I usually have one trainer, I have hired two more trainers, so I have a total of three trainers right now, to train them on a bus. Once they're trained on the bus, they go down to Bradley, the Secretary of State, and they take their driving part of the test. Once they pass that test, then they're in, they're ready to go. So it's a long process. Very long process, yes, for your CDL.
Other questions for the Kathys?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
The two of you have done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And it's, and it sounds like it's not done yet.
No, it's a big puzzle, and every day is a puzzle.
And thank you very much.
From the time we get there to...
You put a lot of hours into this.
Yeah, we have.
And a lot of headaches into it too. But thank you.
So, and I just want to say, so as most of the board knows, that these ladies have worked for our, for our district for quite a long time. Kathy Haas actually was technically a 111 employee, and still is, but has been, you know, part of helping 201 for many years, but just listening to the ownership that Ms. Brosman takes, when she talks about my drivers, my buses, my buildings, my schools, my kids, you can tell she lives and breathes this district, so, thank you. Thank you, ladies, very much. Okay, so, so like I said, the obstacles that we presented last time have been overcome, so we are again, ready to roll for next Monday. And so, you know, from there, the clear next question is what comes next, and then what do we continue to do? So we are going to, well, as everybody knows, the CDC has recently released even updated guidelines for when to open schools. And while the state's, you know, metrics and Will's and Kendall's metrics have really come down, Grundy County is actually the lagger in this one, it's still around like the 8.6 positivity rate, and still has a fairly number of high cases. So what the CDC does say is that schools need to implement layered mitigations, and one of those is clearly the physical distancing, that we know, as we bring back all of these students, that in many situations, the students are not going to be able to be six feet apart, both on the buses, as we know, when we've got, you can't keep 49 kids six feet apart on a bus. MPC has, physical distancing has been an experiment with preschool kids all along, and as we put, you know, 20 or 19 or 22 kids back in an elementary classroom, or the junior high classrooms, physical distancing is just, we know that when parents send their kids back, we're going to separate them as much as possible, but in some cases, it could be, you know, down to three and a half or four feet apart. So, you know, that is something that we're going to need to now watch for a little while, just to see, and to make sure that it doesn't create some type of further spread that we aren't anticipating. It doesn't seem to be in the other districts that we've been watching that have come back, so we are comfortable taking this step in our school buildings. But clearly, the next discussion is, you know, how do we then bridge that gap to get back to a full school day, which gets back to the, to lunch? So we will be working with our administrative team over the next month. A lot of the focus is going to be letting the schools adjust to having, you know, all of the kids back at the same time, but the immediate discussion will then continue on how do we, where do we go for lunch, you know, who's going to be, you know, monitoring the students in those situations, and then what does the instruction look like as we expand, you know, out to the full day? So, you know, our teams will plan to bring, you know, data and a possible recommendation to the board at the, at the March board meeting for you to consider and make decisions if you want to take that next step forward.
Okay, I have another question, or can you give me the actual date that we're going to start the five days now then? And also, are we going to continue any of the remote learning?
Sure, yeah. So we are planning next Monday to begin the five days of in-person learning, but maintaining the four-hour schedule. The, we, yes, we will still have remote learning as an option for at least the remainder of the school year. There is discussion on if the state is going to have that as a requirement as we go forward into future years as well, and we can discuss if that looks the same, or if it looks drastically different, if we continue that in the next school year. But no, remote learning is definitely still going to be an option for families. I believe most of the elementary schools kind of dropped into either the low 20% or the high teens of children that are staying remote. MIS, I think you stayed right around high 20s or 30s, yeah, right around 30, and then the junior high was still mid 30s, right, if I recall? So yeah, definitely more of our older students have chosen to stay fully remote, but once we got back to five days of in-person learning, the elementary shift went the opposite direction.
I think it's also important to point out that those students that are returning to in-person will still have some remote time that occurs in the afternoon, just as they do now. So all students will have some portion of their day in which there is some remote, while our full-time remote students will, as it indicates, will be full-time.
And I would just like to say, you know, again, this is just the next step, it is not... It is not the last step. So we still have plans on getting ourselves back to full days of school during this, you know, 2020, 2021 school year. So it is the goal of all of us to get back to what we had with school. So we are looking forward to continue to collaborate and hopefully by early April or right after spring break or something, we'll be ready to go with full days of school. But we need to work a little further with our staff to talk about the right procedures. And then what does the instruction look like as we, you know, move away from having that dedicated remote time in the afternoon? How does that change what happens within the buildings and for those remote learners?
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to say that there's nobody on this board that doesn't want to go back to full-time. But the process of doing it is a complicated one, as you've heard a lot of tonight, and there's a lot of other problems that you probably haven't even heard about, that people are going through trying to set this up. And I really appreciate the staff and the administration and what they've been going through to get this set up. As we go forward, we will, we are all in favor of going back to school. And I think that's the goal we're working towards, but we have to do it under a safe message, process that meets the criteria that we have to follow. So thank you very much, everyone. And anybody else got any comments?
Just real quick, can you update us on the teacher vaccinations and where that's at?
And I'm also, I'll start, and Mrs. Robinson is our vaccination guru because the business office is taking the lead in that. We have, so we both have access to vaccinations through Grundy County, through the regional office. So the county will occasionally let the office know that there are some for educators. That's been a slow process, and it's not just Grundy County. It's been a slower rollout than we were thinking, and last week's weather also delayed things. Our staff, and I'll let her elaborate, we have found success in accessing other pods around us, and we've actually been able to get a great deal started in the process. So, Mrs. Robinson?
So, yes, like Dr. Mont said, Grundy County initially was going to be our main resource, but we've had some ups and downs. And so they have come through certain weeks, but then other weeks they had delivery problems. So we were able to get several staff members into Kendall County since we service those Kendall County students and have a school in Kendall County. But then additionally, we have several staff members who have gone out on their own and found appointments through Jewel, through Walgreens, different vendors, which has been tremendously helpful. So as the, at the end of, by the end of this week, we will have around 100 staff members that will have be fully vaccinated, and we have another 225 additionally that have received their first dose. So 325 that have begun the process. And then we're just really, we've reached out to all of our staff members. So we, at this point, we know everyone else who wants to receive the vaccine, and we're just really have this small group left that does still want to receive it. And we hope that Grundy County can come through, hopefully either this week or next week, and get that group started, and then we'll be fully moving through the process. I mean, once they get them started, then it's the additional four weeks. And then we have a smaller group of staff that for various reasons needed to wait, whether it's different medical problems, or some staff members were COVID positive and wanted to wait the 90 days. So we have a small group of staff members that are in that boat that we will keep getting vaccinated as, you know, as they want, so.
For, just for background too, when we initially did this survey on the vaccines, it was around 375 of our staff that said they were interested. That wasn't a formal declaration at that time. That was just so we could help Grundy get numbers. And I inflated that up to 425 because we hadn't heard from all of our transportation staff yet, or to, and also to allow any of the like regular or permanent substitutes to also be eligible. So the fact that we're already at 325 that have at least gotten dose one, you know, plus the, you know, the second doses that are coming for some of those folks, you know, this week, we're, like she said, we're down to the final few, you know, handfuls of staff.
Yeah, that'll actually end up being a really close estimate, your 425 will probably be where we land when it's all done.
The new CDC guidelines now, once a staff member's fully vaccinated, no longer have to quarantine if they have close contact, is that correct? And how far is that out of, you know, their second?
Sure. So the CDC did come out and say that. The IDPH has not announced that yet. So typically, we wait for the guidance from the IDPH. It hasn't come up yet since we have such a small number of staff that are fully vaccinated. But like I said, by the end of this week, we'll have 100, so we will need to follow up with ID, or will probably with Grundy County Health Department to find out if they'll be announcing that. But I, my understanding was it's two weeks after your second dose. Is that?
I'm not recalling the exact CDC guidelines, but all I know is that we have to wait for IDPH to adopt any of that too. The director did mention that in last week's call that I was on with her. She did not bring up any of that today when we got a little vaccine update this afternoon.
Okay, let's move on. Extended summer school program.
Very good. So one of the challenges that we've had at the end of last year and then throughout this year is again, trying to provide effective instruction with a limited amount of time and also with the safety of our students as a priority. So again, as we have conversations about extending the school day, having students in person for longer periods of time, we've also talked about what could an extended year look like. Traditionally, we've offered a summer programming option for our younger students. We would call it the Dive In Program and also the Jump Start Program, which we've offered for a number of years now. This year, we started conversations right about winter break, about what we could offer that would supplement the deficiencies that we've had this year as far as time. And so we've been working together, and I'm going to introduce Gina Ruggieri, and I would introduce Mr. Finkelstein, but he is unfortunately unable to be here tonight, so I'll be trying to fill his shoes, although I think my feet are much smaller. But with that, Gina and Jason are our summer school coordinators, and they've been working together with myself and with Mrs. Staub, or Dr. Staub, and a number of others about trying to create this extended summer school program that we'd be able to offer up for even more students for a longer period of time. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jerry, and I'll try to jump in as well to play my part as Mr. Finkelstein tonight. But Mrs. Ruggieri, if you would walk us through where we're at the process.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So in the past, as Dr. Ruland stated, I've kind of taken on, helped Mrs. Baxter with the Jump Start and the Dive Into Summer, and Mr. Finkelstein kind of handled what was done at the junior high. So this year, we are kind of melding together all of the different scenarios that we've had in the past for summer school and kind of coming up with a bigger, bigger plan. So I'll kind of walk you through a little bit of what it used to look like and kind of what we're looking to do this year. At the elementary level, we identified the students through the MTSS process. So the students that were receiving tier one, well, generally tier two and tier three interventions and students receiving ELL services were the students that were invited to take part in the Dive Into Summer or Jump Start program that we had. The teachers created small group reading, writing, and math lessons. And then we also had a SEL component kind of woven in through read alouds and, you know, small mini lessons within that. At the campus, students were identified by staff based on academic needs and deficits. And generally, the students were enrolled in course recovery. So if they needed the credit, then they would need to take the summer school. And it was done through a company called Edge Annuity. It was an online program, and it was facilitated by the teacher. And it was a blend of in-person meetings with that teacher and then a self-paced module and assessment completion. So that's typically how it looked at both campuses. So our plans for this summer is to try to make it available to all of our 201 students, K through eight, that have an interest in partaking in it. We want to have an in-person learning opportunity and then also still have a remote option for the parents that choose to keep their children remote and not in person. In the past, we've had transportation for our students that were part of the Dive Into Summer and Jump Start, so our plan is to hopefully have transportation again as well. And then we also are hoping, because of the COVID situations and being, you know, able to be there for the maybe kiddos who have been exposed or exhibit COVID symptoms, we're hoping to be able to have a nurse on site at each campus and also have a little extra help administratively, since we will have such a larger number of teachers and students partaking in it. Our dates are June 7 through July 2. We are planning for five days a week. Typically, in the past, we had done four days a week. We're shooting for five days a week and then three hours per day from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. So this is kind of where we are right now in the, we initially sent out a survey to our teachers just to generate some interest. It's a delicate balance between how many teachers are we going to have and how many students are we going to have. So that's something that Mr. Finkelstein and I are kind of used to. We've done this before, but then now it's on such a larger scale. But we're, we sent out the survey, and we had about 58 teachers, a couple of those were aides, but showing interest in partaking in the summer school. We had about 23 of those showing an interest in grades three through eight, and about 35 showing interest in K2 and a couple of special education and ELL teachers as well. So that's kind of where we're at. Where the next step will be to send out our invites. So I'll bring us to this. How will we identify the students this year? So we want to start by inviting. We want to keep that same, you know, the students receiving MTSS and ELL services. We also want to invite the students that have been specifically identified by staff members for various reasons. Either they really struggled with the remote learning or the hybrid learning, or perhaps students that, you know, had attendance issues or just really generally struggled. So we'll start there, and then we'll also, you know, provided we have enough, we'll be able to open up to anyone who would like their child to partake in it.
So if I could just add a little bit there, we would like to scale this up as large as we're able to. But as Mr. Jerry said, one of the issues, the variables that we have to first address is how many teachers are we going to have available to us to be able to teach this? Because obviously, we want to keep a manageable class size that's effective. So we're collecting the interest, as Mr. Jerry has mentioned. And then the second variable is then inviting students to attend, and how many are going to attend is also going to have an impact on this. So I would anticipate monthly at our board meetings, giving you updates as to where we are in that process. But the big piece that I hope is a takeaway here is that we would like to offer this to all of our students that we are able to service during the summer. So we are going to target the most at-risk students for invitations, but also open it up as we are able to for all students to be able to attend. And again, as many staff as we have that are interested, be able to scale that up and offer it to as many students as we're able to service as well.
And as I said, it's kind of the tricky process we talked about, like, should we send a interest survey to parents to kind of get an idea of how many students we might have? But we really want to keep it as simple as possible. We don't want to confuse anyone, so we really don't want to send anything out to the parents until we're ready and able to just say, here you go, sign up, you know, invite the students and have the parents enroll. If you do it too early, you run the risk that they'll back out, and then you kind of have that unbalanced again. So trying to time it just right. So we're kind of looking for the end of March, beginning of April, to start sending out those invites and be able to start getting a number of how many students are actually going to partake in it. So what will it look like this year? What we really want to have is all three of these components. We want to have a synchronous learning experience, and we also want to have personalized targeted skill practice, and then keep that social, emotional, and enrichment opportunities as well. So we have a plan on how that will look. There we go. So we do want to still keep that live teaching and having those small groups that teach your created lessons for reading, writing, and math at the elementary level, and still being able to target those essential skills identified by each grade level. But then we also want to be able to utilize that online component, but in-person, online, where the student is able to be at their own pace and have it adapted lessons given to them. And we've had a couple of meetings with the Edge Annuity company, and My Path is the K5 version of this online component. So we're hoping to have a little bit of both, because that way, it's still facilitated by the teacher, it's integrated with the NWEA data, and it really tracks and targets individualized skills needed per student.
And I'm going to add a little bit to that as well, because I think that's the piece that we want to make sure that our parents are aware of, is that the students are going to get personalized teacher attention. They're going to get face-to-face teacher. The students that are attending in person will have teachers working with them throughout the day. They're also going to get an individualized experience, which is what Edge Annuity and My Path does. So it will not be the same as their current experience is right now online. That will be done in person. They will have a teacher there working in small groups or one-on-one with them. And also, in addition to that, will have access to an individualized education plan through the platform of Edge Annuity or My Path in this scenario, which is tailored specifically for the needs of that individualized, or that individual student to be able to help support. But they will have a teacher that will be working with them.
Trying to take the best parts of all the different summer schools that we've done in the past and sort of bringing them all together. In the past, when the teachers would meet with the small groups, the other kiddos in the group would maybe do hands-on center activities. And because of COVID and our mitigations, this will help to, you know, really target those skills, but yet keep them a little more individualized and reduce some of that exposure as well. So it's kind of the best of both worlds. Then we'll also have, my favorite, the SEL component. Last year, when we did summer school, the Jump Start and the Dive Into Summer, we did it all virtual, and we had some fine arts teachers, we had music, and we had PE, put together some lessons and have some Zoom sessions with the kiddos. And then we also had some social, emotional lessons put together by our social worker and school psychologist. So it was nice to have those, and we want to be able to keep that component as well. So I'm not positive how it's going to look yet, but that's kind of our plan is to still have those maybe videotaped lessons that the students can access, that the small group teacher can also bring into the, bring into the summer school lessons as well. So trying to keep that component that we thought went really well last year and be able to bring it to our summer school this year as well. And the campus is very similar. The same idea in the past, it was more that Edge Annuity, but this time, we're hoping to have more in-person and again, having that small group targeted lessons for the students at the junior high level as well. And then also having that SEL enrichment. So, you know, those videos or those little Zoom breaks or little activities that can be geared toward those students as well in, for social, emotional learning and fine arts enrichment type learning as well.
In addition to the academic and the SEL component that you've seen up here, we've also begun discussions about, again, our elective courses and what we're able to do in the summer. One of the big concerns that we had throughout this year was with our music program. And I know our band directors are very, very ready to have students back to playing instruments. And so we've been talking about what that could look like possibly coming into this fourth quarter as the weather warms up, but then also the potential of, again, pairing with this, some opportunities through the summer if, again, we have those who are interested to do that and provide that for our students, and then those students who are interested in doing that. So we are opening up our summer as best we can to offer to our students additional time for the academic, the SEL, and also some of the electives that they weren't able to take full part in throughout this year.
So the next step would be, we're hoping to be able to have some more help administratively for organizing this and mostly for onsite when it becomes time for that. Start having grade levels identify the skills that really they would like to see targeted during our summer school. And then, of course, that community, informing the community and gathering some interest. Like I said, we're thinking maybe the end of March, beginning of April, sending something out, our invites, and getting some of the commitment from the parents on that side of things. And then once we have our numbers and get a final commitment from our teachers, then we'll be able to figure out ratios and how many students we will be able to service, and then schedule our transportation and hopefully be up and running on June 7. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I would just point out that like as soon as you said, schedule transportation, Kathy Brosman's already starting to shake back there, so. Yes. Yes. Yeah, we don't, we don't believe that transportation for this would look like it does right now. We're just, we're just saying that we would be interested in offering transportation when we could. So we, we will talk, you'll be a part of the process, okay?
I promise. When we get closer to that, we, we'll, we'll be talking.
Well, I greatly appreciate the effort that's going into this because I've been hearing from a lot of parents that, that they're looking for not more like a makeup of what they feel like they've missed and, and some enrichment that they feel like they, they lost something along the line and an opportunity to serve them in that way. I appreciate the effort that you've put putting into that and expanding the summer program. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would add that, you know, these, the, the costs for programming like this are always eligible to come out of Title I funds when possible. Not sure. Oh, can you turn yours off, sir? But even today, I was, I, I read something from Congresswoman Underwood's office that made it look like this last round of, of ESER money, that there was an additional amount that we had to reserve specifically to address learning loss or like to, so that, that, that might be an opportunity and that was like $200,000. So there were, I expect that there will be grant-eligible funds to, to help us expand what we're able to offer the community in summer school.
I was happy to see the, the interest that we, you know, have garnered so far. I know it's not a firm commitment, but it, I felt comforted to see those numbers coming in on our survey. So, you know, we'll, hopefully that will pan out that way. That's a good group. We've never had that many ever. Any other question?
I just want to take a moment and, and recognize Mrs. Rogeri and Mr. Finkelstein for what the, what effort they've put into this as summer school coordinators. We started talking about this in December and with summer looking at June, you know, six months away, and they've already been hard at work organizing what that could look like and especially when we started brainstorming how, how we could expand this. So again, I want to point that out, that they have done a tremendous job for essentially doubling or possibly even tripling what our programming normally would have looked like in the summer and the amount of time that they're putting into it. So I appreciate them and just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to the PE uniforms.
So I believe Mr. Gensler and/or Mrs. McCarron, or I don't, I don't know who all the, the team effort is here, but they've been having some discussions about some slight modifications to the way they, they handle PE uniforms that they wanted to, to bring forth to the board and get any feedback on. Their, their info on this is also included in their, their school report that they submitted to the board.
Hi again. So conversations have come up for registration for next year, things like that, discussions of how do we help the families, how do we help parents? Things have changed greatly for people over the years. So one of the discussions came up with PE uniforms and the cost associated with it and then the necessity of it and is it an antiquated concept that is still going on and is it something we can move on from? So we started talking and we immediately went to my background. I have a PE background and I've never taught at a school that had uniforms. So my immediate concept was if you get rid of them, it's not as big a deal as people might think. Might be something that the kids love, might be something that the parents love. It's something you don't have to purchase, saves you money. There are people that might be making less or out of work right now. So changes that we make, I think COVID's proven one thing, it's education's change, better or worse, we're making a lot of changes that we haven't made in a while. So our idea was how about we move on? We talked to MIS and maybe it's, it's time to move forward from PE uniforms. Still expect the kids to change, still wear their athletic attire so they can work out and take care of business, still use locker rooms in the future. We're still not going to be using them this year, even if we do have any sort of PE. So we won't be changing at all this year and then move forward. So kids bring their own athletic attire, bring their own shoes, change in the locker room is normal and then have classes normal. So it's kind of a, our discussion was, you know, looking out, what kind of changes can we make that would be positive for the kids, positive for the pocketbook, things of that nature.
So I'm going to jump in here real quick and I know, I think Mrs. McCarron is going to also address, they originally brought this idea, I know they've been discussing it for quite some time. They included me in this, this discussion and when we started talking about what the intent behind PE is and the educational value that's behind that and if students are able to participate wearing appropriate clothing, would it have to be a uniform that, that was purchased? And it was pretty quickly as we started thinking about our central focus and our central purpose, that didn't require a specific uniform, but it did require appropriate clothing, appropriate shoes. So if we can get to that point, I think we're in a, we're a very good spot to continue with our programming without and possibly removing some of those hurdles that cause issues with, with students. So it was, I definitely support where, where the direction of this conversation has been going.
Yeah, I think the appropriate part is safe. Safety, I can't play basketball in flip-flops. I can't play basketball in work boots, so that's going to hurt somebody's feet, things of that nature. So appropriate is safe. Yeah, appropriate we're talking about is safe. Can kids perform and meet the standards of PE in the uni, in the clothes that they're wearing, whether it's purchased or not?
Over the years, we've outsourced our, our PE uniforms and that does add additional cost to our parents to do. We also, the talk about, you know, travel to go pick up a uniform or delivery, us holding and having a surplus of uniforms. We just feel like all, all around educationally, safety-wise, it's, it's just a move in the right direction for us at this point.
I had one question about the wording that you had. You, there's a statement at the end that says the uniforms are not to be worn during physical education classes. Does that mean like if they purchased them in the past, they can't use that as, as their PE attire or?
No, that's talking about athletic uniforms. So if you have a son or daughter on the baseball team, they can't wear their baseball shirt. I know sometimes kids will wear their uniform to school because they have a game that day. We don't want the kids walking in and wearing their soccer's uniform to PE class because again, that's unnecessary wear on the, on the athletics uniform and we don't want to save those for the athletic competition on the field.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, but previous purchased, if you have an older brother and you fit in it, here you go, you can, you can wear it for as long as it can be passed through family.
One of the big, one of the popular changes that have been occurring in, in many different districts in the area is the idea of the athletic spirit wear. That's been replacing school uniforms for a number of, not PE uniforms, excuse me, for a number of years and in surrounding districts is they've gone away from the actual uniform and, and allowed students to wear the spirit wear in place of. So this has been a trend in education for a number of years and so I appreciate the, the conversation about it.
And I, I think the early discussions, like we may als, we, we may still offer some type of, you know, shirts, shorts, something like that for parents that don't want to bother, they just want to, you know, buy whatever the school might have. They just wouldn't be required to, you know, purchase and utilize that. If they had their own attire from home that meets the, the criteria, perfectly fine.
Yep, that's, that's absolutely correct. In addition, like Dr. Roland had said, some, some kids just enjoy sweatpants as opposed to shorts or, or something. So the whole idea of it could be spirit wear, it could be appropriate favorite team outside of it, comfortable. We want you comfortable so you can be active, have fun and learn something. Questions?
So as you, so as you can imagine, there's quite a few details still left to work out on this, but we wanted to make sure that we brought this to your attention as it came up and then we'll, we'll be working through the details of what ultimately we'll go into the recommendation for next year with the handbook for you to take a look at.
Thank you. Okay, administrative reports.
Sure, I will call up the, the various members of our cabinet to give any updates. Dr. Staub was just reaching down, so it was like not making eye contact. So I'm, I'm calling up Dr. Staub first.
Thank you for that. We're continuing to roll through, continuing to gear up to have all the kiddos back in person, five days a week. We're excited that that's going to happen next week. Today, actually, we started our eighth grade to high school transition meetings, which is interesting to do remotely and with everybody on Zooms, but they are still working very effectively. That's something that I'm very proud that our district does. We work very nicely with the high school to create a nice transition plan. So our eighth grade students with IEPs and 504s are rolled over to the high school. All of those supports and plans are easily transitioned to the high school. So it alleviates some stressors for the students as well as the parents. So we started those today. Really great feedback from parents, not only about how wonderful things have been going for their students this year, but also how excited parents are to have their kiddos back in person, five days a week in this upcoming future. So overall, very good meetings today, so we're excited about that. Couple other highlights I wanted to point out. We, we continue to have our partnership with the University of St. Francis and this semester we're offering three classes. One is on the impact of poverty on children's educational environment and the supports that we as teachers and educators can do for the children. Another one is on engagement and then our final one is on remote and hybrid strategies to help support children during this, during this time. So those classes, it's a great partnership that we have with the University of St. Francis. It's taught by our teachers. The, the last two, the engagement and the remote and hybrid strategies, we've been able to craft those to specifically address the needs that our teachers needed right now. So as we've been rolling through the pandemic and needing to transition between fully remote to hybrid and then back to in-person while we still have some students hybrid, those classes are really great to be able to craft them specifically for our own teachers and then our teachers receive college credit when they finish the class. So yeah, those are some great things that we're excited about in the realm of student services. Any questions for me tonight? All right, thank you very much.
All right, Mrs. Robinson was shaking her head that she's got nothing, so we'll call up Mr. Sousa if he has anything else.
Hello. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to talk. As I mentioned in the last couple of board meetings, we've been evaluating different bids to our proposals for E-rate reimbursement such as building the building, communication links and district firewall and, and a couple of other projects, which I'll probably bring to you guys next board meeting, hopefully for approval. But what I want to talk about today is we need to rethink and restructure our Chromebook procurement plan. When we went to five through eight, one-to-one, we did this giant seashell game to then come up with a plan that made sense for budgeting reasons and just educational reasons to then every fifth grade student gets a Chromebook and we buy fifth grade Chromebooks every, every year. And that works great for five through eight, but now that we are two through eight Chromebook one-to-one, we need to re, kind of restructure that plan and to then start replacing second, third and fourth grade Chromebooks. So, so the team, we've been working on different strategies for a while and I hope to then bring to you guys from next month, a recommendation, but basically it's going to work like this where we would start purchasing Chromebooks or procuring Chromebooks every, for, every year for every second grader and every fifth grader. And then keep going along that line until when that cohort of that second grade student, when he, when that student gets to fifth grade, instead of purchasing a Chromebook at fifth grade for them, we would actually purchase at sixth grade. So what we would do is we would start off going every second and fifth grade, every second and fifth grade, every second and fifth grade until, and we would switch to then every second and sixth grade. And the idea behind that is the Chromebook would run for four years when, so if I'm a second grade student next year, I would be assigned a Chromebook and I would run that all the way until essentially sixth grade and then I would be issued a new one to then continue and finish my Menucha 201 career, sixth, seventh and eighth. This way it kind of starts bringing up the, the bottom half of our Chromebook supply of second, third and fourth grade and brings in, you know, newer units to liven everything up in as some, you know, economical and planable method. This way it's not like one year we're buying just this much and the next year we're buying a mountain and then we're not buying anything for a little bit, then a big mountain. This way it's a sustained plan for budgeting reasons and everything else. Obviously, we're still working on the budgeting and all that still, but that's kind of the proposed plan we have in store. In the board packet, I, I uploaded a picture of what it kind of looks like. It's a little more visual. I don't have it here, there's kind of a lot going on with that. But if you have any questions, that's kind of the, what I want to kind of get in front of you to then hopefully take some feedback and come to you guys next month for a procurement recommendation. Okay. Hearing no, lastly, I just wanted to say, you know, how, how lucky I am to serve on the tech team. All of this, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. You can see all the cords, but there's a lot of moving parts behind the scenes to actually kind of pull this off or attempt to. And besides that, and all the parents coming in and all the other issues we're dealing with, the, the tech team has really risen to a higher level than even normal. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the, the guys and girls texting me as, hey, is the sound working, is the sound working? And all the other things that we're constantly checking at this board meeting right now and, but all the other times that we're helping everyone out. So I just wanted to say how thankful I am for the team that I'm able to serve on. With that, I'll take any questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you.
You, Aaron is completely right, like all of the different hats he wears in our district, but like the board members have been able to see, he's also walking around this meeting almost like a production manager, you know, checking sound over here and like, you know, checking mic levels and it's entertaining to watch. So thank you, sir. And agreed, your team does an amazing job, so thanks for all they do. Mr. Searle, did you have anything else to update with? Nope, all good? Dr. Roland?
I just had a quick question for Rich. How did the snow, we had that new contract with the new company, with all the snow we got, did the company perform as you expected?
Well, I think that's a hard question to answer. We had, you know, an astronomical amount of snow and I am new to the district, so I was able to provide a minimal amount of support, but considering the amount of snow, considering the repetition of the snow, I think we've held our own, you know, as a group. Has it been perfect? No, no, it has not. And could there be room for improvement? Absolutely. But generally speaking, if you've asked most of the members of the school, I think it's been acceptable. It, you know, we, we hope that anytime we get a new bidder or somebody that's not familiar that, you know, we'll have more opportunity to provide them support. And, you know, this year has been challenging with that front. It's been hard to give support when we've been pulled in so many different ways, but, you know, I would, I would say if you want a grade level, probably we're somewhere in the C, C range, something like that. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Along the same topic, did we have any difficulties getting these, the plow drivers and everybody on the premises with the bad snows?
I've never had problems with getting them here, maybe had problems with coordination once they were here. And some of that, you know, can fall upon me, just not having the experience with this level of snow. You know, I think the, the plow company did an acceptable job considering the amount that we had. You know, I, I, I would say that anytime I've had a new company on any bid, it's always been challenging. This year has been challenging times 10, just from the quantity of snow.
Were there any of the difficulties, did, did any of the difficulties come up because they are not a local plow people?
Well, they.
Because they were out of town and it took a while to gather?
Yeah, actually, they, they actually are pretty much local. The folks that are operating those plows are within probably a 15-mile radius of here. That's the folks that they hired. And that part of it was never a problem. The problem maybe was speed of, of coordination and this is a large district, it's spread out and it requires basically an enormous amount of all-at-once operation. And any other district I've ever seen never requires quite this quantity. We have. We have, you know, a need for everything to be done by 4:30 or by 6 o'clock and that's a very hard thing to do with this, you know, the, the, the distance that this district has. It requires a massive amount of equipment and if I was going to point my finger at one thing, I would say that maybe their equipment was a little lacking this year.
That was part of the, the bid when they, when they took the bid.
Right.
That they would be done by a certain time each day.
And they've executed that. What they have done in a poor manner would be probably getting enough equipment in a, in a timely, you know, a timely way at each particular area. And that has been rectified over maybe the last four or five practices that we've had. Since we've had our opportunity to have, you know, what appears to be or what feels like about 30 practices, they've gotten much better. But, you know, it, it was not a simple process this year. I'm not going to, you know, there's no way to sugarcoat that. Would Roberts, if that's where we're kind of going, a local company, have been better this year? Absolutely, absolutely, yes. But we need Roberts to work on their bids. Any other questions? All good?
So I'm just going to speak briefly about some updates with the assessment side of education. So I said, I think at the last meeting, that Illinois State Board of Education is looking for a waiver for the state assessments. As of date, that waiver has not been offered for application, but Dr. Ayala, who is our state superintendent, has reissued her commitment to apply for that if one does become available. In the meantime, we still have to plan as if we are going to be administering the state assessments, which would be IAR, DLM and our ESL assessments as well, access tests until we know otherwise. So at that point, if we are waived, then we will be able to remove that from our, our expectations of our teachers and our students, but at this time, we still have to proceed as if that were to happen. In addition to that, one of the things that we do want to do is in May, we want to, again, offer or do our local assessments, which would be NWA MAP. This winter, we, we did a pilot, we had some buildings coordinate both to do the online version of it, to see how that would work. And then with the intent that come this May, that we would be doing a one-time assessment in May to determine our needs for summer school and also where we would be as far as starting in the fall. So essentially looking at where our students, how much they've progressed in this year of, of remote and hybrid and the areas of need and deficiency that we know we need to address either in summer school and also in addition to the beginning of next year. So those are the two real upcoming assessment issues. Other than that, we've talked quite a bit about our summer planning, but I'll be sure to continue giving updates where we are with the state level.
Dr. Ruland, when is the time period for the state assessment?
So there's usually a early window and a late window. They have offered it for, opened it up for the entire window, so it is pushed back all the way into April. So I believe for IAR, I think the last date is April 26th. For DLM, I think it's, or, I think it might be the, or, excuse me, Illinois Assessment of, for Science, might be the 28th. Regardless, it's all approximately at the end of April would be our final window for that.
I only have a few brief remarks and reports. The first, I know some of our schools have already started to send out some data, but the, the rest will be following if they haven't, but we are required, one of the things they did not waive this year was the Five Essentials Survey that we have to send to all parents and, and staff, which is the, the climate survey that's conducted on the schools. So the, the window opened up here in February and it goes all the way through the, I think, March 21st or March 28th or something. So we will be making sure that our parents are aware of that survey site being open and ask them to contribute so that we can get reports back there. I know the staff in each school building are asked to take the Five Essentials as well as students, I think in grades five through eight or, you know, four through eight, there we go. Thank you for the, the assist way back there. So that will be going out very soon. Second, just, I'm sure everyone has been, you know, watching some of the events in Springfield, but there's been a little bit of political turnover in that city. But one of the things that came out was the governor's budget address and he did indicate that he was recommending flat funding for schools for next year. You know, he did predict that we would be fine because the, the federal government would be adding, you know, is expected to authorize additional payments. It, it's been received, at least from, from what I've read, that some of the legislators are not okay with skipping the increase in state funding, so there may be some, some back and forth that, that happens down there. But it sounds like no one is recommending cutting state funding, which is the, at least the, the fingers crossed. So we will watch that and bring and communicate any updates as they come. But those are the two things that I had. So any, any board members have topics, they'd like us to gather info on your mic sensor.
Dr. Ruland, did you have any overall feedback, and I did not ask you this ahead of time, so I apologize, on those that did do the MAP, kind of where they fell in relation to previous years, do you have any idea or is that something you'd be able to bring us next month?
Yeah, I can, I can bring that next month. We, we need to close, the, the district window has to be closed for them to get district data that, I know the buildings have looked, looked at that data, but we have not had a good conversation about that, but I will bring that to the next board meeting.
We do need a closed session to discuss collective bargaining and the employment of specific personnel.
I need a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
I'll make that motion.
Second? I'll second it. All those in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye.
All nay? Motion carried.
There is no action expected after closed session, so we are going to end the live stream because we will adjourn the meeting right after closed session. So thank you.